Good evening and welcome to the City of Tuscaloosa zoning board of adjustments. Meeting, board meeting, today's date is July 22nd, 2024. I'm Michelle Coley, the Chair of the Board, starting with Mr. Rollins, please introduce yourself.
Paul Rollins Jr.
Tim Gillum.
Marty Hamner.
And we'll introduce our staff, city staff that's here to assist us from the Department of Urban Development, Emily Hayes, Associate Director of Planning. Mrs. Jonathan Bowman, Bowman, I always miss your name, Neighborhood Resources Coordinator. And from the Office of the City Attorney, Ms. Kim King, Associate City Attorney. And Mr. Kevin Jones, helping with the video production in the back. Now, the Board of Adjustment does not have the authority to enact zoning laws or special exceptions, nor does the Board have authority to rule on claims of equal or equal protection of the law or the fairness or unfairness of any zoning ordinance. By virtue of state law and city ordinances, the purpose of the ZBA is as follows. We hear appeals from decisions of the zoning officer of the city. We grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the city council therein. We grant variances from the terms of the zoning code when owing to the special conditions, a literal enforcement of the code would result in unnecessary hardship. Now, no one factor determines what is an unnecessary hardship, but all relevant factors, when taken together, must indicate that the plight of the property in question is unique in that it cannot be put reasonably to conforming use because of limitations imposed upon it by reason of its classification in a specified zone. My working definition of an unnecessary hardship is as follows. The property cannot be put to any reasonable use under its current zone classification. It must be a unique and peculiar difficulty relating to the property of a serious and significant nature. It must relate to the property and not any personal issues. This includes economic, financial gain or loss. A variance may not be granted where the property owner merely suffers a financial loss of a kind that is common to all the property owners in the area. Circumstances that are not hardships, self-inflicted or self-created, inconvenient, personal. Now, the zoning board of adjustments by virtue of state law and the City of Tuscaloosa ordinance does not have any jurisdiction or authority to consider, interpret, or enforce any term or condition of subdivision covenants and/or homeowner association rules or regulations. These matters are therefore not relevant areas of inquiry by the Board on any petition. Such covenants or regulations are between the private parties involved and not the ZBA. That having been said, any decision made by the ZBA on any particular case does not necessarily preclude the enforcement of such subdivision covenants and/or HOA rules or regulations by other lawful means. Now, this is a public hearing. It is being recorded, videotaped, and is streaming live on the city's website, Facebook, as well as local cable TV. For decorum, proper decorum, civility and respect for others is required at all times. There's a sign-up sheet that we're outside for the public comment. Up to four speakers will be given the opportunity to speak in favor of a petition, and up to four speakers will be given the opportunity to speak in opposition to a petition. All speakers will have up to five minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. When you are at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone and state your name and address for the record. All comments should be directed to the Board. No questions or comments are to be directed to city staff. I would ask city staff to confirm for the record that all the appropriate and required public and individual property owner notices for each case upon the docket for petition now before the Board have been made in accordance with the law.
It has.
Okay. Now, this hearing is an opportunity for the petitioner to present their case, for the public to inquire and make their views known about the petition, and for the Board members to gather relevant facts before making its decision. Now, city staff will introduce the petition and present facts and information to the Board concerning the same. The petitioner or petitioner's designated representative will be asked to make comments and answer questions from the Board. The petitioner will have up to 10 minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, four members of the public are, that are in support of the petition, and four members of the public that are in opposition to the petition, who signed up to speak, will then be afforded the opportunity to make inquiries and comments. Now, the petition response, at the close of the public comments, the petitioner will be asked to respond to comments if necessary. Any rebuttal will be allowed up to two minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, the Chair may then permit the public to respond, but only to any new issues raised by the petitioner in rebuttal. Any response will be allowed up to two minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, at the close of the public comment, or once the Board is satisfied that it has received all relevant information on a petition, the Chair will close further comment or discussion, and the Board will then discuss the matter. The Chair will read into the record the motion to approve the request, along with any conditions set by the Board, and the Board members will commence voting. Now, four votes are required to approve any petition, not a simple majority of Board. Now, tonight we only have four voting members, so all would have to vote in favor for a petition to be approved. One vote can cause it to be declined tonight. Leave signs in the yard, staff will pick up the signs as soon as possible. Now, any party aggrieved by the final judgment or decision of such Board or zoning adjustments may within 15 days thereafter appeal therefrom to the Circuit Court by filing with such Board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision from which the appeal is taken. The Board members have had a chance to view, review tonight's agenda items. Do any of the members have a conflict of interest with any of the cases on tonight's agenda?
No.
No. Cases withdrawn or continued?
There is one case that is requesting to continue. They have to request it since the mailings went out, but that is ZBA 6024.
Okay. Any minutes for us to approve tonight?
The May 20, 24 minutes.
Okay. Accepting a motion to approve the May 24, 24 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes approved? All right. Ms. King, any updates on our?
No updates at this point, we still have one pending case on appeal, but other than the fact that we filed our answer, nothing else has happened in that case at this point.
All right, thank you so much. All right, Ms. Hayes, we'll get started with our cases.
So we'll go ahead and start with that ZBA 6024, where the petitioner is going to call up and request for the continuance.
Okay.
Good evening, hey, I'm Frank Summers, TTL 3516 Greensboro Avenue, Tuscaloosa 35401. Developer would like to continue this case until next month in order to work through some additional planning options.
Do we have to have a motion on that, or we just vote on it?
You just vote on it.
Okay, starting with Mr. Rollins' vote?
Yes, to continue.
Yes, to continue?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Continuance approved.
Okay, good evening, Board, we'll move into our cases to be heard tonight, starting with ZBA 5824, Robert Deason petitions for a special exception from the fence and wall regulations on the property located at 402 17th Avenue, zoned R1H, Council District 4. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view. So I will show you the front of this house. The next few pictures are going to show you the area that we're really focusing on with this case tonight, which is that existing retaining wall that runs along the perimeter of the house. The applicable regulations, these regulations talk about in a required front yard, a wall or fence should be at least 50% opaque, and then in a residence district, no fence should be more than four feet tall in height in a required front yard. So the petitioner is requesting a special exception to install a three-foot wrought iron fence on top of the existing retaining wall. Per the petitioner, the installation of the fence is necessary for safety reasons. Our current International Building Code would require a similarly sized fence to be placed on top of a retaining wall if it were to be built today. While the overall fence height does vary from the grade of the sidewalk to the top of the wrought iron post, it doesn't exceed seven feet in any area. And the design and materials were approved by the Historic Preservation Commission at their most recent July 10th meeting. And this is just some mock-up, so y'all can kind of see what this is going to look like on top of the retaining wall. Do you have any questions for staff?
Mr. Deason, you can come forth?
My name, my name, excuse me, I'm a little raspy, I've just, I've had cervical fusion and I'm still a little raspy, but my name's Robert Deason, 402 17th Avenue, Tuscaloosa 35401. We would like to put this retaining wall up for aesthetics, obviously, but there's a safety factor involved. As a matter of fact, my wife has fallen off of it one time and broke her wrist, but not because she wasn't paying attention, but her flower beds are right up behind this wall, and she gets in there and weeds and everything, and she disturbed a rogue bumblebee, and it got after her and chased her off, and she fell off backwards. So we would like to have that to help prevent any further occurrences, but we'd like the way it looks also.
Any questions for Mr. Deason? Thank you so much. Do you have anybody signed up to speak for? So no one signed up to speak for or against, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition? At this time, we'll close public comment and start with Board Comment, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues with the petition, and as it said, I mentioned it would be approved by the International Building Code, so I'm in favor. I have no issues with the petition, I'm in favor.
I have no issue with this petition as well, since if it were being built today, it would be required to have this, and for safety reasons, I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well.
I agree as well.
All right, we'll close Board Comment, and I'll read the motion. ZBA-58-24, Robert Deason petitions for a special exception from the fence and wall regulations on the property located at 402 17th Avenue, zoned R-1H, Council District 4, voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition approved.
Okay, moving into our next case for tonight. ZBA 5924, Jamario Williams petitions for a special exception to allow vehicle-mounted food sales on the property located at 2201 Skyland Boulevard East, zoned ML, Council District 7. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. This is near the Walmart on Skyland. And then a closer aerial view. So the existing business that's on the property that will continue to operate is Dion's Barber Shop. The petitioner is just asking to set up in the parking lot of Dion's. So we'll just go through a few pictures, this is looking at the parking right in front of the barber shop. This is looking back towards Skyland. This is the area, as you're looking at the building, just to the right. And then where the SUV is parked is the area in which the food truck is planning to set up. The applicable regulations for vehicle-mounted food sales, the Board can consider the striped parking that is available if the food vendor has received proper licensing. And then the discretionary criteria being that the Board can set a time limitation or consider any public safety concerns that were expressed by fire or engineering. So the petitioner is requesting a special exception to operate a food truck. This food truck will operate from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The property does have five striped parking spaces right in front of the barber shop, as you saw. Petitioner is requesting to operate at this location until the end of the year, and they have obtained a City of Tuscaloosa business license for the food truck. This is just a hand-drawn plan that was submitted by the applicant. I will make note that these parking spaces are something that both planning and the city engineer is not okay with. This is not improved parking. It is also located technically in the right-of-way, so that cannot be utilized for parking, but anywhere else on the property, those ones that are in front of the building are perfectly fine.
Go back to the picture, go on back to the, that little side area where the, can the food truck park in that area? That, the gravel part?
Right in here, or you're talking about right here?
Could it park there?
So this is an access point, they wouldn't be able to block that. They could park back in here, I'm not 100% sure if that's available, but the petitioner can speak to whether or not that lot is open to them.
Okay, so they cannot park anywhere in that section, because that's the access, and it'll be blocked, okay?
Right. The city engineer office, a representative from the city engineer's office, did see this plan as it went through. They originally received a special event permit to set up where they proposed, that's where that drawing came from. Both the city engineer's office, as well as the Fire Marshal's office, didn't express any concerns about the location of that food truck being placed there. Just want to let the Board be aware of that. Do you have any additional questions?
No more questions? Jamario Williams? You can come on up. I'm Will. State your name and your address.
My name is Jamario Williams, my address is 8702 Rolling Hills Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35405.
Okay, tell us your plan.
Ma'am.
Tell us your plan, what you plan to do.
Okay, so yeah, my plan was to set up my food truck here where I have the food truck sign it. I've been in this spot multiple times. It's easy access for my customers to come. It's not restricting any of Dion's customers in his shop. I got the okay from him, he's let me come there a few times. I've had the special permit to go out there for the past couple of Thursdays this month, but I haven't, I've only been able to make it to one. But it's a great location for the food truck, if you guys approve us to be there.
Now, you asked to be there from now to the end of the year, how many days do you think that would end up being from now?
I open, my schedule is Monday through Friday, but I'm not open all days of the week, because some days I have events in other places, like Aliceville, Alabama. So it's not exactly every day of the week, but it'll be probably about three, three to four days maybe out of the week. And I talked with Dion about it, he's here with me too as well, and he said it's fine, you know, I can come any day of the week if, you know, you guys approve it.
Any other questions for Mr. Williams? So if we gave you 40, if we were to give you 45 days, limit to that time, would you be able to operate from now to the end of the year with those 45 days?
Forty-five, so I can pick like 45, they don't have to be consecutive?
Uh-uh.
Got you.
They don't have to be consecutive, it just can't be more than 45 days?
Forty-five days, yes ma'am, I'll make that work.
Okay. Not saying it's approved, I'm just asking.
I got you, yes ma'am.
I got you. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, anybody signed? We don't have anybody signed up for or against, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to come up and speak on behalf or against this petition? Okay, we'll close public comment and go to Board Comment, starting with Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues with this petition either. The Fire Department had no issues, and Office of City Engineering had no issues, I'm in favor.
I appreciate that Mr. Williams has followed all the rules and regulations. He has his business license, he's at the special permits, he's submitted whatever he needed to submit, so I don't see any issue with granting this approval.
Yeah, I'm in favor as well, but I would like to put a stipulation that there's no parking in this grass area here, and are we going to do 45 days or to the end of the year?
So you say what you like, I'm okay with 45 days, and he can use those however he likes to use them.
I'm in agreement.
Mr. Hamner?
I'm also fine with the spot, I do agree with the parking restriction here.
All right, and the 45 days?
Forty-five days is good with me.
Mr. Rollins, okay. All right, at this time, we'll close Board Comment, and we will read the petition. ZBA-59-24, Jamario Williams petitions for a special exception to allow vehicle-mounted food sales on the property located at 2201 Skyland Boulevard East, zoned ML, Council District 7, with the stipulation, no parking in the grass area right-of-way, and 45-day limit on the time. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to our next case, ZBA 6124, Adam Madison petitions for a variance from the residential swimming pool regulations on the property located at 6006 Moreland Avenue, zoned R1, Council District 3. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view. Obviously, this is a very new house, so that's why our GIS does not show this. But here is a picture of the house today. The applicable regulations, this is the swimming pool regulations in Section 24107, where it limits swimming pools to not being located any closer than six feet or their required side yard depth, whichever is greater. So if the side yard depth is greater, that is the one that is applicable. So the petitioner is requesting a variance to construct a pool in the required side yard of the property. This property is located within the High Grove Planned Unit Development, and it was platted with 15-foot side yard setbacks. So the side yard setback in a typical R1 zoning is 10 feet. So this is quite large, it was part of that planned unit development request. Petitioner is requesting to allow for the pool to be built approximately 10 feet from the side lot line, and per the petitioner, the pool will be used to help with his overall health, fitness, and lifestyle.
Okay, go back, go back to the picture of it. No, of the overall picture of the yard.
The yard.
Right, right here. Okay, so show on here where he's saying he wants it to be.
So the next slide, I'll show you kind of a hand-drawn plan, but this is approximately the area that they are planning on doing it. This is quite rough, we can have the petitioner completely confirm, but this next picture that I'm going to show you is actually something that the petitioner submitted, and this is the pool itself with those setbacks, so this is the pool. It's going to be that 10 feet off this side lot line. So going back here, it will be the 10 feet off this side lot line. We did receive a letter from that neighbor to, is on that side of the property, he had no issues with this request.
But he's meeting the setback from the back, correct?
Correct. So it can be in the required rear yard, up to six feet from that rear property line. He's meeting that. It's just the required side yard.
So are the HOA covenant people okay with this as well?
They also submitted a letter, they said they didn't have any problems as long as it adhered to the architectural standards that they have in their HOA covenants, which it should.
Do you have any additional questions for staff?
So the 10 feet, the 10-foot setback is from the rear property line?
It's from the side property line. That portion of the code is essentially, if you were to have a house, it's to keep these pools in the backyard. It's not to allow them to encroach over into a side yard where you have maybe a pool that you're looking at a house and you see their pool here. It's to keep the harmony of the neighborhood itself by pushing these pools and accessory structures into the rear of the house. This, again, is a pretty unique property with its setbacks, being quite large on the side setbacks.
Any other questions for city? Mr. Madison?
Good evening, Adam Madison, 6006 Moreland Avenue, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35406. So like Ms. Hayes said, I'm asking for the proper, or the pool in the backyard. It does encroach on the side yard, and normally it is 10 feet on the side yard, but my yard and that whole street does have a 15-foot setback on that right side. So we're putting it on in the backyard, it will be six feet off of the property line off the back, but it will need to be 10 feet off that side yard. And like I said, I do have a letter from my neighbor and from the developer, Mr. Richardson, of the property.
Is there any reason you couldn't shift it just a four or five feet? Wouldn't that get him out of what he needs?
Yeah, in that picture, there's not a, my porch is enclosed. When we bought the house, it was already enclosed, so that little middle area, there is a fireplace that encroaches, I would not be six feet off the back.
So there's a fireplace behind this porch?
The little open section right there, which is a 30 MBL. There is a fire.
Emily, where are you referring?
Yep. There's a fireplace right, there's a fireplace right out there that encroaches, that would not be six feet off the back if I put the pool there.
Would the pool be visible from the street, so looking?
No, sir, I have a six-feet fence already.
Okay, so the fence, you're not going to have a tall diving board that somebody crosses?
No, sir.
Is there anywhere else on the property that you could put the pool?
No, ma'am, on the left side, on the bottom, there is actually a storm drain that has a 15-foot easement as well, and I didn't want to encroach on that just for the possibility of any, any further issues in the future.
This is a new property, you haven't built this house yet?
No, it is built, yes, sir.
Oh, the house is built today?
Yes, sir, it's built and built.
And the fireplace is built today?
Yes, sir. All this is already done, it was done when the house was built.
So for a variance, you have to show a hardship, so what's, what's, you know, the hardship of this?
So obviously the hardship, obviously, my kids are homeschooled, so that obviously the physical activity of them using this, if I'm not granting the variance, we will not be able to do the pool. I'm not doing a concrete pool, granite, or I'm doing a fiberglass pool, just for the, so that's the reason why. The way that comes in that size, they're pre-built.
Above ground pool?
No, sir, in ground. I said I got letters from the developer and my neighbor that I won't impeach on any of their property, and it will not be seen from, from the main street.
What's the size of the pool? I see 35 feet.
Sir?
What's the size?
It's a 35 by 14.
This is free-form pool?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And then what's the next size? What's the next size down?
I don't think they come with one, they have circle pools or circular pools, they don't have square ones in that size. They could go to a 40-foot. Like I said, most of them are 10 feet, so the developer has no issue with me being 10 feet off the property line, and I wouldn't encroach on that 10 feet, just this, for some reason, our street has 15 feet, just our street in our neighborhood.
Any more questions for Mr. Madison? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody signed up to speak for or against? No one signed up to speak for or against, anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment and start with Board Comment, Mr. Rollins?
Overall, I don't have an issue with the petition, but the only problem is, is that it's a variance, and with the variance, we have to show hardship. And I'm having difficulty finding a barrier, I'm sorry, hardship to approve it. I understand where the normal setback would be 10 feet, and in this instance, it's 15 feet, but that's because of BUD, where it has to be 15 feet, correct?
And this is the only section in the neighborhood? How many other houses are there in this area, do we know?
We'll look at that, we'll check on that.
Yeah, so that's the only issue I can see, is finding the hardship. Once we get clarity from the city on any other properties, I may have a better idea of which one I'll be voting for.
Yeah, I'm in agreement, like if it's one street over, everything else in the neighborhood is a 10-foot setback, and then this street is the only area where it's the 15, I can see the kind of hardship, and then you're doing the fiberglass kind of pool to where there's no smaller size to get, and then it's no smaller size.
there's no smaller size to get, and then it's no smaller size, so couldn't go down on that part, so. So I'm starting to see if we can get that information about how many, like, the street over and the street behind or something like that. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the hardship is, is a struggle here, but, you know, I'm still struggling a little bit on if you could not shift this just a little bit to, towards your porch, you could not have to go through this. Is there no way to make that work? Yeah.
There may be possible, I'm doing it to be safe. I didn't want to order the pool and then it not be able to fit in that size. So, yeah, I do have, there's seven other houses on Moreland Avenue, and you can see a plat where other ones, other streets have six-foot setbacks. Obviously, we have other friends in the neighborhood that have those similar pools in there.
Can you bring it up?
Your lot, what?
Four ninety-six. They got it. Okay, thank you. Now the houses across the street have ten-foot setback, so that means just because...
It's across the street.
It's across the street, that's kind of them.
And I talked to the developer, and he doesn't have any idea why it's like that either. That's what Mr. Richardson said.
These all look to be ten-foot from what I'm reading. I don't know, I mean, it's a little, but it's ten right there. Looks like, looks like there's several numerous properties in your neighborhood that are ten-foot setbacks.
Yes, sir.
And those are like across the street?
Some of them are directly across the street from me.
Yes, sir.
With that being the case, I don't really have an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hammer?
Yeah. Given that you got that, the majority of the neighborhood, and it looks like maybe the hood design, maybe that was just, maybe they started that way and made it shorter, so. I think that would be a hardship.
Okay. Mr. Rollins, is that? Okay. So we'll close board comments, and I'll read the petition. Let's see. Uh, ZBA-61-24. Adam Madison petitions for a variance from the residential swimming pool regulations on the property located at 6006 Moreland Avenue, Zone R1, Council District 3. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition approved.
Okay, we'll move into our next case for tonight. ZBA-6224. Gary Phillips petitions for a use variance to operate a private parking facility on the properties located at 1208, 1213, 1215, 1301 Paul Bryant Drive, and 901 Frank Thomas Avenue, Zoned RMF-2U, Council District 4. Just a quick note for the board. The reason as to why it looks a little bit different than what was put on the legal notice is what was put on the legal notice was what was on the application, which is the church. These are actually the adjacent parking lots that are still owned by the church, but for clarity's sake, we wanted to go ahead and straighten that out in the presentation to you as well as on the agenda. So these are the three parking lots that the applicant is requesting for. Another point of clarification, there is no construction that is happening, no parking garage is being proposed. This is just what we have to classify this as. Going into a little bit more of this, this is that 1213 through 1301 Paul Bryant Drive parking lot. This is that, again, just kind of looking from a different angle. 901 Frank Thomas Ave. And then 1208 Paul Bryant Drive. Applicable regulations, this is not a permitted use or a special exception in the residential district. These are zoned RMF-2U. So the petitioner is requesting a use variance to charge for parking on three lots owned by Calvary Baptist. Per the petitioner, college students and patrons of adjacent businesses and apartments rely on the private parking area and have for many years. The northern lot, located at 901 Frank Thomas Ave, has eighty-eight parking spaces. The western lot, which is that 1213 through 1301 Paul Bryant, has two hundred and twelve parking spaces. And that annex lot, which is 1208 Paul Bryant, has eighteen spaces. Petitioner states that Calvary is centrally located and a prime area for college students and community members to park and walk to class at UA. Tenants who live in the neighboring apartments or houses or people who are patronizing businesses in downtown Tuscaloosa. Per the petitioner, the limited funds obtained through the fees for parking allow for the church to upkeep the lots. If they are unable to collect funds for the usage of the lots, a hardship will be placed on the individuals in the surrounding area who rely on the ability to use them. Do you have any questions for staff?
What triggered them having to come and get this? Because they've been doing parking forever.
Yeah, they came in to apply for a business license, and then some sign permits as well were also triggered, and that's how it came up.
Okay. They did, are they waiting to get the business license? If we approve, they can get the business?
Right.
All right.
Is there any fencing or construction, like a gate? It's just going to be?
No construction. It's going to look exactly how it is today. Petitioner can confirm that, make sure that there isn't any gates being installed. But our understanding as staff is everything is going to look exactly how it is today. That's, that's what they want. They just want to keep operating in the way that they have.
All right. Any more questions for the city? Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so that's...
State your name and your address.
Gary Phillips, 1201 Fifteenth Street, Tuscaloosa. I'm representing Calvary Church this, this afternoon. The church is just asking to do exactly what they've been doing for, for many, many years, which is to allow students and residents around there to use a parking facility that we have. We use Air Garage is who operates the facility for us and charges students through their webpage, whatever, and that's all we're asking. Any questions? Not changing anything, not doing anything any different, just trying to do that. The other option, obviously, we would have to close the facility or lock the parking lots up, and that's just not a reality. We're just using it for parking.
How long have you used this web-based parking app?
We probably, uh...
Dan, you know when they started?
I think around two or three years ago, they started the app.
Might have been, yeah, about two or three years ago, and then now, but we were also parking for many years before that, so.
And do you know how much you charge for that stuff?
It's two hundred dollars, I think, forty dollars or forty dollars a month.
So you don't do game day parking and stuff like that?
We do do game day parking. Tide Pride uses it.
So how would you, how do you, I know it's through a web app, but how do you regulate parking? So?
They have somebody come by and check license plates.
So they scan, they scan the plate, so it's no D?
Like I said, we used to do it ourselves. Jan, the, the staff there at the church just got tired of kind of monitoring that ourselves, and so we, we, Air Garage does it for us now. They put up some signs, they go to an app, pay by the phone.
And so do you allow overnight parking? Is it just during the days, during certain hours?
Just during the day. On Sundays, there's no, we don't, we don't charge for parking options on Sunday. Wednesday nights, funerals, and there's regulations that go along with, the, the people that are renting understand that they have to vacate the parking lot if we have things that are going on in the church.
So you're saying the hardship would be if you, if we stopped the parking, to have to monitor people from parking there? Would be the hardship on the, because everybody would be trying to park still?
Yeah, it would be, it'd be tough. And, and the, and the hardship, obviously, to the people that use it, because the city has built some, we, we built some large condos and apartments there, and they don't have enough parking, so they, they use the church parking for it also.
Any other questions for Mr. Phillips?
I, I have a question for the city. So this is the church's parking lot, all, all three lots. And they have to come before the ZBA to use their own parking lot? It's private parking because of the zone?
To charge for parking. It can be used in association with the church for free, but because they are charging for parking, that is not a use specifically associated with the church. That's why they have to get the business license and request this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Okay. Dan Strickland is in favor to speak?
Thank you. I'm Dan Strickland at 1121 Paul W. Bryant Drive in Tuscaloosa. I'm the executive pastor at Calvary. So just, as Gary was saying, Gary's representing us as one of our church members, but we've had multiple, you know, even as we're getting ready for the school year, a lot of college students and their parents calling because they depend on that parking, and so asking about that. And so it is, it's not, it's not a lucrative thing for the church. It's just maintaining our lots is what we're trying to do, is be able to do that. So it's forty dollars a month for unlimited parking for them, and so that's what we're, you know, just to get this approved so that we can get the proper business licenses in place to be able to, to do that. So we would appreciate it if we could, if we could do that, so thank you.
Thank you. We don't have anybody else signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this petition? If not, we'll close public comment at this time and start with board comments. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm in favor of granting the petition. Um, I can see, I guess the hardship would be just due to the lack of adequate parking spaces in that particular area due to the density of the students and the traffic that are in the area. So I have no issues with granting this petition.
I'm in agreement. To me, it would be more issue to have to shut it down than to leave it open. People would still be trying to park there, and so it would still be an issue. So I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with my fellow board members.
Okay. We'll close board comment, and I'll read the petition. ZBA-62-24. Gary Phillips petitions for a use variance to operate a private parking facility on the property located at 1121 Paul W. Bryant Drive, Zoned RMF-22U, Council District 4. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition approved.
Moving on to our next case, ZBA-6324. Ashley James petitions for a variance from the accessory structure regulations on the property located at 1029 Myrtlewood Drive, Zoned R3H, Council District 4. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And a closer aerial view. Here's a view of the front of the house. And then a view of the structure that we are talking about tonight. Applicable regulations, it does state that accessory structures should not be located any closer than sixty feet to any front lot line. As you can see, this property is on a through lot, so it has two frontages. Petitioner is requesting a variance from that accessory structure regulation to construct a two-level detached garage. In June of this year, the contractor applied for a business license, or, applied for a building permit, excuse me, to expand the structure. Per the contractor, the plan was to add the second level for storage. Permit was not issued by city staff due to the need for additional information on the project. As it is in a historic district, we do typically require more information on projects that are being applied for. So the city received a complaint about work being done on the property July 1st, and subsequently, a stop work order was issued by our Building and Inspections Division. Since more than fifty percent of the original structure's cost of replacement has been destroyed, the building must come into conformity with the current zoning code. So zoning code does require that sixty feet from that front lot line. This property is considered a through lot, so it has that frontage along Myrtlewood and then along Convent as well. So per the petitioner, due to the layout of the property, the garage cannot be placed in a conforming location. And the design and materials of the proposed garage will be presented to the Historic Preservation Commission at its next meeting, which is August 14th. So here's a survey of that. As you can see, this garage is located seven and a half feet off the property line, so it is okay to be in that side yard setback, just as long as it is not encroaching more than five feet closer to that. It is about seventeen and, seventeen feet off of that rear lot line, which is the frontage along Convent Street. And this is something that was submitted by the petitioner by request of staff. This is the floor plan of that addition that they are saying is for storage. Do you have any questions for staff?
So is the whole thing a new build, or was the garage?
So the whole thing is, it was originally a single-story garage that was built right around the time that the house was built. The addition, because of the amount of work that they have done, we have to consider this a new structure.
So the original structure was there, and it was not, not conforming the original structure?
Right. So everywhere that this brick is here, that was approximately where the original structure was.
So it doesn't matter, really, that they've added the extra, it's just because they, they triggered something because they added the, the building on top?
Correct. More than fifty percent triggers it as a new build.
So if they had just redone the bottom part, then this wouldn't even be before, it's because, okay?
Correct.
And this is, you said roughly on the same footprint, so there was a previous structure?
That's what, so this structure here, right in this line, this was the original structure. It had just kind of like a little bit of a roof there. That was so terribly drawn, sorry for that. But that was the original structure, just a single-story two-car garage.
But this is the, this is the original brick?
Original brick is the original structure. Everything that's on top of that is new. Yeah.
But we're not discussing the second story, we're discussing offset?
Discussing just the distance from this lot line, correct. The height of the structure itself does meet our regulations, as well as the square footage of it, too. It also meets our regulations per zoning.
So we're only discussing the rear setback?
Correct. That, that setback requirement that requires for the structure itself to be sixty feet off that Convent lot line.
How many feet?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Sixty.
Right. Do you, across the street on Convent, it's like some apartments and stuff, some you could almost consider that an absolutely, from a usage standpoint?
Right. There are multiple other accessory structures that are built along Convent. You may be able to see it back in this aerial view, yeah. So all of these structures are detached garages as well. A lot of times in these historic districts, we do see this. Typically, in historic districts, these houses are built prior to our 1972 code, so that's why. This one was a little bit of a unique situation with it, the house itself in this was built around 2006. Zoning officers have different interpretations over time. Our current zoning officer stands true to that requirement that says from any front lot line. This does meet our front yard requirements, that definition of it of saying any public street frontage.
But they're not increasing the width of this. They're just going up the same.
They're just going up, it's just because of...
The only reason they have to be here is because they're at a floor.
Over fifty percent.
Right.
Now, since they're going up, they still have to meet the regulation of no accessory structure being used as...
A dwelling. Yeah, it can't be used as a dwelling. It can only be used for storage. That's why we had them submit that floor plan as well, just confirming.
Well, even across the street of Myrtlewood, if you look, they don't have a back street, but there's a lot of accessory buildings all along the property line there that are not sixty feet.
Any more questions for Ms. Hayes? All right, thank you. Ashley James?
Hey, how are y'all?
All right, how about you?
I'm Ken Horton. I'm the owner of 1029 Myrtlewood. I bought the property probably five or six years ago. Our intent of moving the neighborhood and living here is to improve the neighborhood and make it better. Uh, our intent of moving the neighborhood and living here is to improve the neighborhood and make it better. I think everything we've done to date, landscaping, if you look around back, there's a dumpster right at my back gate now. When I first bought the house, I could see the stadium. Now there is a three-story whatever built directly in my backyard. More times than not, I'm cleaning up Covenant Street. They throw mattresses, box springs, trash, period. So what, when I bought, it was a really nice place that just needed a little love. One of the other things that I did when I bought the house, in that house, when I bought it, there was a two upstairs, there was a, a separated door between the downstairs bedroom and the upstairs bedrooms. So when I first bought it, there was college kids living upstairs and a professor lived in the downstairs part, downstairs. Well, one of the first things we did when we moved in, we didn't want renters there, you know, we wanted it to be our house. Um, I'm in the process right now of selling my house in Birmingham. Our intent is to make that our home in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. And right now, I've got three-bedroom house right below Vulcan, and I've got to have a place to put that furniture. Not to live in it, just to store it. So the intent, we did not change any of the physical structures. And we did, barely went above the height. There was an A-frame on top of that brick, and it was a substantial A-frame. We were able to keep the original structure, the rafters, we had to add some rafters onto it, which we did. And we stayed within the footprint that was already designed and there. Um, we like it there, it's our home. I spend, you know, if you look around the neighborhood, you could, the, the neighborhood needs some love. And the good thing is the neighborhood is starting to improve. And there's, there's a two-story house on the Covenant at the very front of the street. They're going through renovations and fixing that. Right across the street is renovations. And then the house right down the street, they just put it on the market for like one point seven. So the neighborhood's changing, and I think the neighborhood's changing, changing for the good, and we're trying to be a part of that. And we love Tuscaloosa. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
As far as the accessory structure-
One question for you.
No, we, we understand that you want to use that second level for storage. But of course, city code, you can't use that as far as-
Right. The downstairs was already air-conditioned, the downstairs already had electrical. And the downstairs was a, it wasn't really, we, we did store cars in there occasionally, but it was really a game day garage. Um, with us moving here now, I've got a bunch of University of Maria, Julio Jones shirts, footballs, all kinds of stuff. You know, I need a place to get that out of the house, because what we're trying to do is make that house more of a, 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 a family house. You know, get that game day stuff out of it, make it, you know, bring it, I got new furniture, new appliances, all that stuff coming. Um, I'm trying to get a new roof put on the existing house. Um, we're getting, I think, approval done for that. Um, we're doing, we're going to go to a synthetic slate, which has, like you see a lot of those in Mountain Brook, beautiful. And, uh, so we're not going to just put the asphalt like everybody else does, we're going to put the, the nice tile. And then hopefully that'll catch on and other neighbors will, will spend the extra money and get that done as well. We're using hinkle front roofing, very professional. We're using Bartlett Quarles, Quarles or something to do the AC. And, um, they did the original AC in that place and they, they do everything good.
So, that sounds like some great upgrades and I think they'll be much appreciated in the neighborhood. As long as no one is living in the new quarters that you're putting in the back, they can't live-
That's my prime and home. Nobody's going to be living up there.
Alright.
It's our home.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, mhm. Um, Ken, is that him? We have a Ken signed up to speak for in favor. That was you, okay. And nobody else has signed up. Anybody else would like to speak for or against this petition? Alright. We'll close public comment and go to board comment. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, um, I'm in favor. There is no expansion of the footprint. I can see the hardship being the, um, now for clarity. Did this original, um, structure predate the original ordinance in the seventies?
This one specifically did not. That's why I was mentioning that the zoning officers over time have the ability to interpret the code because it can be a little bit clumsy or, that's not really the right word for it, but it's not a super great code, that's why we're updating it. Um, but our current zoning officer has interpreted that sixty feet should hold true.
Should hold true?
Should.
But if it was built after the nineteen seventy code, then it-
Who allowed it originally? Who allowed it in two thousand and six?
That's what, I'm not sure how it originally got allowed. Looking at the permit, it doesn't look like that was originally part of the structure, um, a part of that permit. Not saying that that wasn't done correctly, it's just what we have to go on, the limited amount of files that we have from two thousand and six didn't really help paint a good picture.
And with it being the historic district, that adds, that historic district is going to bring its own issues. The lots are smaller and a little clunky for the size of these houses, so that in itself creates issues. Um, and it's already been here, so all he's doing is adding to the top of it. So, it was approved somewhere, it got here somewhere, so, um, I see the hardship because it's on his property, it's already there, he's improving it, and so, um, okay.
If it passes our board and goes to historic, they can still vote it down, or?
They could theoretically if they did not feel as if the design of the structure matched their design guidelines.
I don't have an issue. I mean, obviously it's been approved at some point. I mean, if his footprint was growing, maybe I could see, uh, not approve him, but being that he's the same footprint, just taking it up, I don't, I don't really, I don't really see the issue.
If you do sixty feet from the front and the back of this house, it can't exist, so we would have to have it torn down. All we're doing is keeping the same footprint and adding stories to it.
Thank you for putting it that way, Marty.
Do I know?
I like the way you put that. Anything else?
No.
Alright, we'll close board comment. I'll read the petition. ZBA dash sixty-three dash twenty-four, Ashley James petitions for a variance from the accessory structure regulations on the property located at ten twenty-nine Myrtlewood Drive, zoned R dash three H, Council District Four, voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition approved.
Okay, we'll move into our short-term rental cases for tonight, beginning with ZBA sixty-four twenty-four. Richard Adams petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at one Forest Drive, zoned R one, Council District Five. Gracious. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And a closer aerial view. This is in Alberta. There are no nearby short-term rentals within a radius, it's about a half a mile radius. Here's a view of the front of the house. And then of that driveway area. Tanner Ashcraft will be the primary contact in case of emergency. Tanner or a team member will be available twenty-four hours a day. The property owners also live within five minutes of the property and will be available for emergencies as well. Tanner and his team currently manage other short-term rentals in Tuscaloosa. The house is equipped with security cameras and keypad locks. It is five bedrooms and four bathrooms. It is not owner-occupied and according to the petitioner, when it's not being rented short-term, it will remain locked. Petitioner is requesting eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff does recommend eight adults and four vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff?
It appears there's two structures on this. Is that, they're detached from each other, that make the total bedrooms?
That's correct. Um, from our understanding, and this may have changed since, this petition has come before the board, um, a couple times. The first time being it was withdrawn due to some zoning regulation issues. Um, when it came back in December, the same thing. It was mentioned at that time that the, uh, petitioner's mother or mother-in-law lived in that house and she could not live there while it was being rented short-term. That's what we communicated with, um, Mr. Adams at that time as well.
So the bedrooms include both structures?
Just that front structure.
Just the front?
Just the front structure.
But she doesn't live in the back structure anymore?
I'm not sure. They can confirm. Um, regardless if she does, she cannot stay on the property wise being rented short-term.
And so, go back to the picture of the house. They say it's five bedrooms in that house?
Mhm. They did some renovations to add an additional bedroom and bathroom to the house. It may potentially be a little bit easier to see from the aerial view of the house. It kind of extends straight back.
So when you do short-term rentals with the two structures, the city has any, doesn't have any statement about this or codes?
So, we-
Can you do one structure or can you do both structures?
Only that front structure can be. We are clarifying it and writing it into our new code. Um, as of now, it's just something that the board has typically held strong to with any sort of special exception requests that have been made, is that no one else can be on the property wise being rented short-term.
Any more questions for Ms. Hayes? Thank you.
We did receive four written comments in opposition to this application.
Mr. Adams?
Well, hello.
Hi. Say your name and your address.
Uh, Richard Adams, one oh five Preserve Circle, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, three five four zero four.
Uh, Autumn Adams, same address.
Tanner Ashcraft, nine zero three Heritage Drive.
Tell us your plan.
Um, like she mentioned before, we've been here, in December, we were denied two, or three out of five votes. Um, I, I've, I've rented it ever since. I rent monthly on that property. I've, ever since I've remodeled it a year and a, we've had people in this house. My mother-in-law lives in the back house as a permanent. She does know that she'll have to get out. If we get our STR, but the main house has had workers that's are in Tuscaloosa or something involved literally for a year and a half since I've had it, we've had zero problems with that. We prefer to have short-term rentals just because they're in and out more regularly. You keep a cleaner house than long-term. I really don't want to turn the house into long-term, but if I, you know, get denied again, that's where it's going. It's going to college living or something of that aspect, and I'd rather not. I'd rather keep it. Because we, I do other short-term rentals, um, we're managing by short-term rental. Guy that does a lot of them, we prefer that method of renting. Um, it just keeps a better home and keeps the neighborhood cleaner. And there's too many positives in that aspect of doing rental, in my opinion. And, um, we haven't changed much since last time, other than keep renting it thirty days to people and, um, nothing's changed, really.
And Tyler, you're going to be managed?
Yeah, so he's, he's under our management now. Again, I, I, we just took over, so we, we, our company hasn't put anybody in the house yet because we literally just, just took over it. But, um, yeah, he had been renting it technically long-term, you know, month, two month, three month, uh, six month. Again, that was before we were involved, so, uh, we're here trying to get it approved for short-term rental. And like he said, he, he's got other short-term rentals. He's had long terms as well. He prefers the short term because you're on top of it. You know, we, I've said it before at this podium, um, we know way more about our short terms than we do any of, I've got personal long terms as well. And with our noise monitors and exterior cameras and all that, we, we've had really good luck keeping, you know, good grip on the, on the property and the control of the property, so.
Richard, how many short-term rentals do you have now in the city?
Um, well, this, yeah, in the city? Well, Tuscaloosa, this would be my only one right now. Well, two, well, one's barely out of the city, it's over there by my office. So it doesn't go in the ZBA, but I'm just-
It's in the P J.
Yeah, it's in the PJ, but, um-
But you have others in the county?
Yeah, I have some in Northport. I have one in the county on some private property that we rent out that, my wife actually manages that one because we actually stay there pretty often too. Um, and then I got two more in Northport. Um, so I mean, I've done this for about three, four years now, and that's just my, I do long-term and I have people that owe me money and it just, it's just, I'd rather short-term all day long. I've got a lot of employees, they rent from me. There's just, it's just, I don't like it, to be honest with you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Adams? Alright, thank you. Alright, we have Tyler Wilcox signed to speak in favor.
Uh, my name is Tyler Wilcox. I live at seventeen Forest Drive. Uh, simply, I live like two houses away from that exactly, uh, to the right. There's just one house between me and that. And I've got zero problems with anything being in that area as a short-term rental. I think the street, you know, gets enough traffic as it is. I don't think you're adding anything to that. I work, you know, semi-odd hours, uh, and I'm coming in and out, and I'm never the only person on the street coming in and out, especially on the weekends, which are probably going to be the bigger targets for a short-term rental. Uh, especially, you know, we all know football weekends, that's kind of the big thing in regards to a short-term rental in terms of when it would be most active. Obviously, a house that's, Forest Drive is right off University Boulevard, there's going to be traffic on University Boulevard on those weekends anyway. And I can speak anecdotally as someone that has worked in the service industry here in Tuscaloosa for multiple years now, that I've experienced talking to multiple people all the time, every weekend, that they stay off in Birmingham because they're getting priced out of a short-term, you know, hotel or an Airbnb or whatever because there aren't so many options in Tuscaloosa, and then they're taking that to Birmingham and they're driving up to Tuscaloosa. And while the total income, you know, gained for the city may be small potatoes in regards to someone buying groceries to stay for the weekend in Birmingham versus staying in Tuscaloosa, it's still more money and more business coming into this area. I personally would rather see someone spending their time and money going to the Piggly Wiggly right across the street from, uh, the Forest Drive location as opposed to staying in Birmingham or getting their drive-through food somewhere else when they could come downtown to Tuscaloosa and drive ten minutes out of their way from that Forest Drive location and to see what this city has to offer instead of, you know, grabbing McDonald's on their way back to Birmingham before they head out. And there's multiple properties, as she said, you know, maybe not within a half mile. Uh, but if you just scroll through Airbnb, there were four, you know, within a mile of that area. So it's not the craziest obstruction, in my opinion, uh, that would be a odd precedent to set. And that's really where kind of my standpoint on that matter is, and why I'm in support of it. I just don't see any downside to it in particular.
Thank you. No one else has signed up in favor or in opposition? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, we'll close public comment and go to board comment. Mr. Rollins?
I have no issues. I'm in favor of eight adults, four vehicles, thirty nights for one year.
So for me, I'm in favor, but seeing it, it's the first one in the area, I would like to see a lower amount of adults and vehicles just to start out, kind of ease it into the community. Um, I would like to see half, maybe four and two.
Yeah, I would agree. I would, might just see less, eight, four, maybe four and two. I agree with that point. I'm, I'm okay with, uh, four or six on the adults. And, uh, looks like the parking would be pretty much available with that second structure.
Okay.
I can be swayed on the number of vehicles there.
Mr. Rollins, are you okay with four and two or? Okay. Mr. Adams, four and two to start, and then when you come back in a year, if we approve it, you can ask for the amount if we don't have any issues or problems. But that would be if it's approved once we vote. Um, that's within our purview?
It is.
Okay. Alright, reading the petition, ZBA dash sixty-four dash twenty-four, Richard Adams petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at one Forest Drive, zoned R one, Council District Five. Short-term rental, one year probationary period, thirty, thirty nights. Uh, four adults, two vehicles, voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition approved. Petition approved.
Okay, we'll move on to our next case for tonight. Uh, Z B A sixty-five twenty-four, Lee Allen Alexander Jr., petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at seven thirty-one Twenty-first Avenue East, Zoned R D one, Council District five. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. On that last petition, if you, we didn't put the stipulation about the mother-in-law's accessory. Do we need to read that into the?
I think it would probably be best if we did read it in, although that would be an independent violation of our ordinance. So we could still enforce it either way, but for clarity, I think it would be better if we read it in.
It's Mr. Adams. Well, his representative is here. Tyler's here. So we're going to run the vote again and add that stipulation just to make sure. I want to, um, be clear. If you don't say it, then, all right, so we're just doing that again. Z B A dash sixty-four dash twenty-four, Richard Adams petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at one Forest Drive, Zoned R dash one, Council District five, with four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, one year, and no occupa, no one can occupy the mother-in-law suite behind the, the accessory structure, cannot be occupied during the short-term rental. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, petition approved again.
Sorry about that, y'all. Okay. We will go ahead and move on to our next case. Again, I won't read that again for you. Uh, this is the short-term rental of seven thirty-one Twenty-first Avenue East. This is a property over in Alberta as well. Some nearby short-term rentals. So that last aerial view doesn't show. There's actually some townhomes that were built just to the south of this board, also approved here. So that's why there are so many there. Here's a view of the house. And then of the driveway as well. Tisher will be the primary contact in case of emergency. Lee Allen Alexander is located five minutes away from the property and will be available twenty-four hours a day. Tisher has not managed short-term rentals, but has experience managing long-term rentals. The house is equipped with video cameras, ring doorbell, keypad entry locks, and motion security lights. It is two bedrooms and one bathroom. It is not owner-occupied and per the Tisher, it may be used by family, be vacant at times, or used for long-term rentals. Tisher is requesting six adults and two vehicles. If approved, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles based on the number of bedrooms. Do you have any questions for staff?
Good evening. Um, Lee Allen Alexander Jr. My address is thirty-six forty-three Oak Ridge Lane, Dothan, Alabama, three-six-three-zero-three. I live in Dothan now, but I was born and raised and grew up in Tuscaloosa, so Tuscaloosa is my home. My family still lives here in Tuscaloosa, so certainly have contacts in the area. The property in question is actually owned by my father. We've had the property for about twelve years. My brother actually lived in it for a while, but he's since moved out. Uh, and a majority of that time, it's either been vacant or used as a long-term rental. And kind of as said before, that hasn't always worked out well. I actually went over to the property today. Uh, the people just moved out earlier last month. And, you know, there's damage there. Didn't take care of, didn't take care of things and stuff that we've got to do and repaint and, and fix some stuff up. And having had experience with long-term rentals before, that seems to be more the case than not, uh, in my experience, but maybe I just have bad luck. But, um, so, uh, I really enjoy the shirt, short-term rental model. I know that it'll probably be taken care of because we have to keep it up. I'll be responsible for it along with my family members. We know somebody's going to be in the house cleaning it probably at least once a week. We'll keep the outside of the property up, so it should keep the values of the property, um, looking well on the street. I saw that originally, I was originally thinking a fold-out couch. You might could put six people in it, but I certainly would be okay with four people, two bedrooms, uh, and one bath. Uh, there's plenty of area for parking off the street. The, the property is fenced. And I just also know that there's a need there, um, living in, uh, in Dothan. I have several friends and people that are Alabama fans and have coworkers and stuff that their kids come to the university here and, uh, they're like, hey, you're from Tuscaloosa. Do you have a place that we can stay? You know where we can stay up there? And I was like, well, my, my dad has a place, but he's got some money in it right now, so. But I know there's that need, and we've had people, uh, that have had to stay as far away as Birmingham when they came up for an event or something. So that was our reason for wanting to change this into a short-term rental.
So who's going to be five minutes away?
Uh, my father.
Okay.
Uh, I checked it today. It's actually five-point-eight miles, so it takes about seventeen minutes to get there.
Okay. And, um, do you have a list of, uh, rules and regulations to be posted inside the home?
Yes, ma'am. And I sent it in. I don't have a copy with me, but I did have that.
Any questions for Mr. Allen? Okay. Thank you so much.
And I signed up to speak for, but I didn't know what I was doing, so.
Speak for you, so I got, all right. Nobody else has signed to speak for or against this petition? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment and move to board comment. Mr. Rollins?
I have no issues. I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
I agree with staff recommendations.
I'm in agreeance as well with staff recommendations.
All right. All right, we'll close board comment and read the petition. Z B A dash sixty-five dash twenty-four, Lee Allen Alexander Jr. Petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at seven thirty-one Twenty-first Avenue East, Zone R D dash one, Council District five, with four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, and one-year probationary period. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Vote, petition approved.
Okay, moving into our next case. Z B A sixty-six twenty-four, Jerel Harris petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at thirteen seventy-six Southern Gardens Drive, Zoned R four, Council District five. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view. The lofts at City Center is what is behind this property. Here's a view of the house from the street. Tanner Ashcraft will be the primary contact in case of emergency. Tanner or a team member will be available twenty-four hours a day. His team, again, currently manages many short-term rentals in Tuscaloosa. The house is equipped with exterior cameras, ring cameras, smart locks, and door and window monitors. The house has two bedrooms and two bathrooms. It is not owner-occupied, and according to the Tisher, when the house is not being rented short-term, it will be used for long-term rentals. Tisher is requesting four adults and two vehicles, and if approved, staff does recommend four adults and two vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you. Jerel Harris, come on down.
How y'all doing? Jerel Harris, thirteen seventy-six Southern Gardens.
All right, tell us your plan.
Uh, just want to move it to short-term rental. Um, I recently, I played at the University of Alabama. I also just, uh, recently had a nephew that just, uh, started playing, so we're going to have a lot of family members coming into town for games and stuff.
And Tanner, you'll be handling everything?
I will. Tanner Ashcraft, nine zero-three Heritage Drive. Um, he's had this house for a few years, been doing long-term rental on it with one of the traditional property managers here in town. But he's wanted to switch it over to short-term, like he said. He's got family playing here now, a lot of relatives and friends coming to town. I manage one two doors down from here. It's done really well, and the, uh, convenience of the hospital is really nice, too, for nurses or anybody like that. So, um, I feel it'd be a, a really good property, and, um, we could have a lot of success there.
Any questions for Mr. Harris? Thank you. No one's signed up to speak for or against? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, we'll close public comment, starting with board comment. Mr. Rollins?
I have no issues. I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
I agree with staff recommendations.
I agree as well.
Okay, we'll close board comments. I'll read the petition. Z B A dash sixty-six dash twenty-four, Jerel Harris petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at thirteen seventy-six Southern Gardens Drive, Zoned R dash four, Council District five. Four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, one-year probationary period. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition approved.
Okay, moving on to case Z B A sixty-seven twenty-four. Bama B and B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at fourteen twenty-eight Twentieth Avenue East, Zoned R three, Council District five. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view. This is just to the west of A C A. There are some nearby short-term rentals in the area. Here's a view of the house from the street. Bama Vacation Rentals will be the primary contact in case of emergency. Kim Roberts or a team member will be available twenty-four hours a day. Uh, Kim has managed many short-term rentals for years in Tuscaloosa. Signage and rule forms will be placed throughout the house. It is equipped with security cameras, keypad locks, lock boxes, and noise detection systems. It is a two-bedroom and two-bathroom home. It is not owner-occupied, and it will be used for extended long-term stays when it is not being rented short-term. Tisher is requesting four adults and two vehicles. If approved, staff does recommend four adults and two vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff?
Come on down, Ms. Roberts. Wouldn't be Z B A without you.
Hello, Kim Roberts, thirteen seven fifty-two West Lake Drive. Uh, this is a new one coming in. Uh, we actually have another new one that y'all just approved last month. It's just two doors down from here. So they, um, the owners of this property, uh, live out of state, and so we'll be doing full-time management.
Any questions for Ms. Roberts?
No.
You have a little experience with this, right? Okay, we don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against this. Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this petition? We'll close public comment. Go with this board comment, starting with Mr. Rollins?
I have no issues. I'm in favor.
I don't see anything in this one. I, no problem?
No issue.
No issues.
Okay, we'll close board comment, and I'll read the petition. Z B A dash sixty-seven dash twenty-four, Bama B and B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at fourteen twenty-eight Twentieth Avenue East, Zoned R three, District, Council District five. Four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, one-year probationary period. Start voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition approved.
Okay, moving into our second to last case for tonight. Z B A sixty-eight twenty-four, Patrick Lee and Matthew Lee petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at seventeen ten Ninth Street North, Zoned R two, Council District three. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view. There are not any nearby short-term rentals in a half-mile radius. Here's a view of the house from the street. Matthew Lee will be the primary contact in case of emergency. Matthew is located in Hoover. Um, he will be available twenty-four hours a day. Tisher has managed three properties for ten years in Gulf Shores. The house is equipped with doorbell cameras, keypad locks, noise monitors, and rule forms. It is three bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. It is not owner-occupied, and per the Tisher, it may be used for personal use or for long-term rentals. They are requesting four adults and two vehicles, and if approved, staff does recommend four adults and two vehicles. Do you have any questions for staff?
No.
No.
We did receive one letter in opposition to this application.
All right, Mr. Lee?
Patrick Lee, one twelve Polo Downs, Chelsea, Alabama. Uh, I'm renting there. I'm getting ready to move to Harpersville, Alabama, which is about the same distance, uh, and then-
Matthew Lee, forty-one ninety-two Memorial Park Su, Circle, Hoover, Alabama.
Uh, my son and I acquired this property, uh, we closed on it last week in hopes to, uh, be able to rent it short-term as we feel like the short-term allows us, the better facility to, to clean and to manage the property and keep the property, uh, up. We do plan on eventually adding a, uh, a, uh-
Back patio?
Back patio covered behind the facility. At that time, we'll have to go through the, I guess, the, uh, procedures to, to add to it. Uh, we have published the rules. As, as it said, I have managed properties in Gulf Shores. I've never managed anything in Tuscaloosa. We are, both of us went to school here. We're very glad to get back to the Tuscaloosa area, and, uh, hopefully y'all consider our request.
And so, Matt, you will be the, um, Matthew will be the main contact?
That's correct.
So if something were to happen in the middle of the night, hitting the road, driving down?
And I work from home, so I'm, you know, could easily just come down here at any time, um, have my laptop with me, do whatever I need to do.
He is about, about fifty-five minutes away.
Any more questions?
No.
Would you be open to considering, um, either having someone here locally or going with a, uh-
We plan, we, I think I heard it, but we, we plan on adding, uh, as we move, you know, the only place that I've short-term rented is in, in Gulf Shores. And as we get through the, the starting of this process, we plan on, uh, hiring somebody here to manage it for us and to, uh, handle the emergencies and any repairs. So we do plan on staffing up eventually to do that.
That would be my only concern. Um, I understand Hoover is roughly an hour, a little bit less, depending on how fast you drive to Tuscaloosa. But if it's a extreme emergency and you may have paramedics or, uh, T P D at your house, they can't wait forty-five minutes or an hour for someone to arrive. So, um, I would suggest, or I would feel more comfortable if we had someone locally here that could get there.
Build a team? Okay.
Can we put a stipulation on it?
We defer to our lawyer. Can we stipulate that they have somebody local?
Yes. You can't stipulate who, just that they have someone local.
We would like to see that just for a case of emergency because during game day, that would be the critical time that you, you know, anytime police are called out and they say they need to, somebody on scene, we'd like to see that. Um, if it is approved, that may be a stipulation. Anything else? Okay, thank you. No one's signed up, um, to speak for or against? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against? Please come up.
Alan Plattner, sixteen twenty-five Ninth Street North in Tuscaloosa, Alabama, three-five-four-zero-six. I'm right across the, the road. And I'm neither in favor nor against this, um, this, um, turning this into a short rental, but I do have two things that I, I think should be considered. One of them is, I am worried, it's a very quiet neighborhood, and so I am worried that, in particular during game day, there could be big parties, so if there were someone really close by who could intervene and/or if we had some stipulations that in case bad things happened, that this could be reversed in case it were to be approved. And the other thing that I would like to be considered is that it's one of the very few affordable places in the Werner School District, and so taking this away from rental or purchasing, it would be great if the city could balance this somehow with making affordable housing and those desirable school districts available. Thank you.
Thank you. So to, just to your point, is that this will be one-year probationary period? So it would have to come back, and if there are any complaints or any issues that could cause it not to be renewed? So that is an option. If you have a problem, three-one-one is who you should call. Anyone else speaking for or against? At this time, we'll close public comment and go to board comment. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues. Like I say, with the only stipulation being, um, having someone that's local, uh, within ten to fifteen minutes that can arrive to the, um, location and just update that with the city.
I'm in agreement. Um, it's just, especially during game day weekends, things turn, happen so quickly. Having somebody close by really makes it a lot easier, so we'd like to see that stipulation.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow board members.
Agree with staff on the adults, vehicles, probation.
Okay, I'll read the, we'll close board comment, and I'll read the petition. Z B A dash sixty-eight dash twenty-four, Patrick Lee and Matthew Lee petition for a special- ZB A dash 68 dash 24, Patrick Lee and Matthew Lee, petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1710 Ninth Street North, Zone R dash two, Council District Three, four adults, two vehicles, 30 nights, one-year probationary period, with a stipulation someone local to handle emergencies. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition approved.
Okay, moving into our final case for tonight. ZB A 69 24, Dennis and Carol Connor, petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 311 Vicksburg Drive, Zoned R1, Council District Three. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. Then a closer aerial view of that property. Some nearby short-term rentals. Here's a view of the house from the street. Petitioner will be the primary contact in case of emergency, they will be available 24 hours a day. The house is equipped with outside security cameras, alarm system, and keypad locks. The house has four bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms, is not owner-occupied, and per the petitioner, the house will remain vacant when it is not being rented short-term. Petitioner is requesting eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff does recommend six adults and three vehicles based on existing driveway, off-street parking, and occupancy as it relates to that parking. Do you have any questions for staff?
No. Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Mr. and Mrs. Connor, come on down. Thank you for your patience this evening.
My name's Dennis Connor, this is my wife, Kara. We live at 3625 Waterfall Lane, Tuscaloosa, Alabama. And we, we wanted to do short-term, short-term rental, because we didn't deal with the long-term rental for the last 18 years. It is better, you know, it'll be easier for us to maintain the house, keep watch on the house. I basically go down as, not occupied, I basically go by there almost every other day, and we keep everything nice and clean, and it's just another way to, that we can continue to have the house, we'd had the house for 20, 25 years.
Any other, any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Connor? Okay. All right, thank you so much. We have one person signed up in opposition, Michael Purvan, Kernan?
Close enough.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Kernan, I live at 321 Vicksburg Drive, the house just to the west of the Connors' house. I've lived there, we've lived there almost 30 years, we've known the Connors for good 25 years of it. They've rented the house pretty much long-term rental, off and on. We've had good times, we've had bad times with the renters. I wish I thought of this more positively. The problem I'm going to have with this, when they were long-term renters, we pretty much got along. When we have short-term renters, you never know who you're going to get, okay? If they're here for the game, they're going to probably be a little loud outside. Our back bedroom, the centerline of our window to their back patio is 16 yards. It's just barely 30 feet off my property line, okay? You're going to tell me that they're going to be quiet in less than 65 decibels, according to the zoning ordinance? I don't think so. They're going to be tight, they'll be quiet, they'll be tight when they're loud. The problem is, right now, we hear everything that happens next door when they're outside on their back patio. The last folks was a big family. They had a good time, they were out on their back patios, but come 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock, they went back inside, it's quiet. You're not going to have that with weekend footballers, I'm sorry. And the fact that they can rent this 30 nights out of the year, initially for the first year, it's about 15 weeks. That is almost 20% of my year that I have to put up with a nuisance, a noise nuisance. So my question is, who do I call? Got to call the police. Well, we've already done that when they had certain long-term renters in there, and it was a problem. And there was nothing that was really done by the city accordingly. Not blaming them, it's not about them, it's about the reality of the fact that our back bedrooms are so close to their back patio where a lot of activity out is going to happen when it's outside, when it's nice, especially in the fall. We have all the time, and the weather is better, and we're going to play football, or basketball, whatever it is. Right now, I'm going to have to give up my right for peaceful enjoyment, because they want to make a little bit more money on the short-term rental. You going to allow that? I don't see this as a necessary change, they can continue to use short-term rentals, they could sell the house, they have options. Maybe adding some noise monitoring equipment, okay? I can monitor the noise with my phone, I've got a little device on there that'll measure it. If it's over 65 decibels after 9:00 at night, do I be the pain in the butt and call the police every time? They're not going to do anything. So y'all are going to make decisions here that have no direct consequences in your life, but will directly affect mine and my wife's life. For 20% of our year, for this first year, the weekends. I'm not in favor of that. I would ask you to reconsider and not allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
To address some of the things that you said, the first line of defense that you have, number one, with a short-term rental, you have a lot more say. If you call and complain to 311, if you do call 911 and there's a complaint posted, when we come up for, this is a probationary year, when we come up for their review, we ask, were there any calls, any complaints that were registered? If they have them, we usually don't renew it.
But I've got to go through it for a whole year.
So you had long-term renters that were there every day that you could control, these are 20% of the time. You will, we ask that they perhaps install a noise monitor so that they can be aware of the noise and handle 10:00, the noise ordinance in place, call, complain, then that usually get, and you let them know, they know that their short-term rental is in jeopardy, because they could rent it out again to college students, that is their right.
Is there anything in the ordinance that allows for, if there's continued violation of the noise ordinance or any other thing, to stop it in its tracks, or do we have to wait the whole year?
The unique, the city.
The unique thing about this application and the timing that it is coming to, they will have to renew their license in January or February. At the renewal period is when we reevaluated as staff. So this time period is only going to be about six months versus something that was applied for in February or March, requesting for an entire year. So it isn't an entire year, it's just until they renew their license in January or February.
So all the licenses are renewed in January regardless of...
Regardless of when they were obtained. If they were obtained in October, even November, sometimes the revenue office is a little bit nicer, and they will, depending on that time, allow for that following year license, but with it being the time that it is, they've never approved for a license for an entire year unless it's the end of November.
Right, right. I don't like the way the ordinance is written, and I would love the opportunity to work with staff or to work with whoever I need to work with to get the ordinance changed and have some teeth put in this, because it's not fair for the folks that have to live around this to have to put up with it weekend after weekend after weekend.
I will say this to you, we have approved over 200 short-term rentals, and the percentage of non-renewed ones, I would say, is less than 1% in terms of the ones that people come and complain about. Like, we've had throngs of people come in and say, we do not want this in our neighborhood, we are against it, and then when it's time for renewal, we very rarely have anybody show back up, because, because it's not as bad as they think it's going to be. I have a short-term rental two doors down from me, and I really can't tell when they are, because the owners of the homes know that, that they have to be more vigilant about this.
I have one across the street and one house down from me, I know exactly when they're renting. It's loud, it's across the street.
Short-term rental?
Yes.
Have you called and complained?
No, and I will start, because if that's the vehicle, I'll take advantage of it. And thank you for your time and for letting me go over the time.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments to petitioner?
I would say, as far as the short-term rentals, short-term versus long-term rentals, you will more so see more issues out of long-term rentals, because if I long-term rent a property out, there's no regulation on the number of cars that can be parked there, where they can park. So as of right now, if we're looking at this staff recommendation, six adults, three vehicles, there can only be three vehicles, and they have to be in the driveway, as opposed to...
Unless they have some friends over and they're going to party.
No.
No.
It's only three vehicles in the driveway. If it's four vehicles, violation, they can't park on the street. So when you look at short-term rentals, there's a lot of buffers that are put in place to protect the community.
Way more than long-term. I'll give you a perfect example, the gentleman who was before you, he said that if he doesn't get his short-term rental, he'd just rent it out to college students. Well, you know, how would you like a house full of college students living next to you? But that's their right, they could do individual...
I've had college students living on the other side of me now for like eight years, and they've been the best folks I've ever, we're great friends, okay? And I'm good friends with the Connors, that don't have, I don't have an issue with them at all. I just know that, I feel it in my bones that we're going to have noise issues late at night, and my wife has problems sleeping as it is. So that's my concern.
I do understand, and that has been noted with the Connors, they hear your concerns, and I feel as the people that they are, they should be able to respect and figure out how to be accommodating on both ends.
Well, thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
All right. We'll close public comment. Connors, would y'all like to rebut anything or have anything to say?
We would take care, we would take all the precaution that we have to, that we have to do to make sure everything is nice and fine, and we would get noise monitors and everything, anything that we need to do to make sure, number one, everything is safe, because that's the amount of work I do on a daily basis. And anything, and to make sure that, you know, that the noise is taken care and stay down. And we will have quiet time from, instead of 10:00, we'll make it 9:00, that everything need to be moved inside or on the opposite side over to the driveway.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll close public comment, go to board comment, starting with Mr. Rollins.
I have no issues, I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
I agree with staff recommendations.
Yeah, I agree as well with staff recommendations.
True, staff and adding noise monitors.
And we'd like to put the stip, can we put the stipulation on noise monitors?
It's pretty standard with...
You can, okay.
The profession of management.
So that's what we'll do, we'll add that stipulation.
What is a noise monitor? What does it do? Does it just report?
It alerts, it alerts the management team that the noise is...
Oh, cool. So it's all...
In this case, it would be these guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we'll close board comments, I'll read the petition. ZB A dash 69 dash 24, Dennis and Carol Connor, petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 311 Vicksburg Drive, Zoned R dash one, Council District Three, six adults, three vehicles, 30 nights, one-year probationary period, and with a stipulation of adding noise monitors that will contact, that'll be proactive contacting. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition is approved.
Thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, good evening. And with that, we are adjourned.